The May 20th, 2019 meeting of the Carlington School District Board of Directors is called to order. Um, who hasn't had the pledge? Eric, have you ever done the pledge? No, why don't you join us? Do you have some pledge?
My pledge is that I am a United States American and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary, please call the roll.
Director Apple.
Here.
Director Simmsick.
Here.
Director O'Brien.
Here.
Director Frank.
He's not able to be here tonight.
Director Russo.
Here.
Director Zalewski.
Here.
Director Honschar.
He's not able to be here tonight.
Director Mendoza.
We believe she will be joining shortly.
And Director Shire.
Here. Um, there is a time at the beginning of the meeting where we allow the public to comment on any items on our agenda for the night. Does anyone in the audience have anything on the agenda they'd like to comment? Yes, please state your name for the record.
Uh, my name's Nicole McMurdo. I'm a resident of Carleton. And it's not really comment, it's a request for more information on some of the finance, um, issues, specifically number five, um, does that involve payment of any type? There's no, no dollar amount associated with that, so we wondered if that...
It's an agreement if we use any intermediate unit services. It's just we're making an agreement that we could use those payments or the town yet until based on what services we actually use.
Okay. Uh, number six, is this, uh, the renewal agreement? Is this a standard?
Yeah.
It's a standard...
They are required independent auditors.
Okay.
Not them, but were required to have independent auditor.
Um, and thirteen and fourteen, uh, basically, what are they?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thirteen is our across the workers' path of workers' contract, not our property casualty insurance. So together they're about a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars.
Did the church screw you off?
Uh, no, I... A little bit. A little bit. But is, is this a new thing? Is this an ongoing thing?
Standard.
We got that property casualty and workers' contract insurance. They gave us about a savings around six to seven thousand dollars this year.
Okay.
We saved a little bit. So our insurance company, Arthur Haller, did a good job for us on that.
So Nikki, once a year, there's a bunch of stuff that happens. This meeting has to be a bunch of that stuff. So all of these things that...
Right. But I know you guys usually vote in a block, so I figured I would preempt that with my questions.
And actually, the church went, when I went over the, what's my shit, I saw a church and I said, "What?"
That is a successor to the PSBA insurance.
Yeah. Oh, is that, oh, that's good to know too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move on. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 16th, 2019 regular voting meeting and the minutes of the May 14th Finance Committee meeting. Do I have such a motion?
Yes.
Move by the second?
Second.
Move the second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Uh, Dr. Imperio, uh, oh, actually, before we do that, executive session, a report, we have an executive session prior to this meeting where we discuss personnel matters.
Personnel, sorry.
That was it?
Personnel matters.
Um, now I'll turn to Dr. Imperio for administrative reports.
Just to say that, uh, next Friday, uh, May the 31st will be graduation for the seniors. They have a wonderful senior class. And since it's being recorded, I'll just remind parents, please remind your young adult seniors to be on the best behavior between now and graduation so that we don't have any, uh, issues of barring anyone from graduation. I'm not anticipating that, but I think it's always a good reminder.
I have a question about that. Is that, is that here at the high school or is that down? Where's the ceremony?
It's always upon his wife there unless it rains.
Okay.
And then it's here.
So it'll be an outdoor ceremony on his wife there as we...
Michelle, can you recall when in, when do we typically call it? If weather looks like it's bad.
Usually before noon that day.
By noon, okay. So by noon on Friday.
About.
We're all hoping for sunshine.
No, and, and, and that was it, uh, on the superintendent's report. Uh, and I don't believe we have, Chris, did you have anything you wanted to add?
We, we went over everything last week in finance committee. Just to reiterate that deficit of a proposed final budget is $711,000 and all that, the presentation we gave last week, Michelle was kind enough to put that on the website for us. So if anybody wants to check that out again, it is on the website available to public members and will be advertised there for thirty days, you know, through day final.
You've included in the packet, Chris, the, uh, the form that's filed with the state. Could we put this, um, on the website as well?
Yeah.
Just so people can have all the details. And then once the final is approved, the next month, put that up as one of them.
Is this on the same, is this on a separate section of the website dedicated to the budget or is this part of the right to know documentation? You know, we've got that page about the right to know where you can get all the contracts?
Currently, it's on the home page.
Okay.
Um, under what's new or latest news. So it's the center column on the home page.
And easy to find. Actually, I, I went on it to make sure that, I forget if I could find it or anyone could find it. I thought I...
I would point out, just to conclude under finance, that you, assuming that you pass your proposed final budget, which in number three says it contains a millage, that millage is not set until you pass your final budget in June. This is merely telling you what that will point to. But you will pass both your final budget as well as your millage at your June meeting.
Any other budget updates, Chris, or Dr. Imperio?
No, that was all I had. Um, I did want to say the principals of course are busy with end of the year activities. Have them engaged in even this evening, so I did want to ask them to come for a report tomorrow as a, uh, a senior banquet here at the high school. And so that is really all I had there.
Moving on to committee reports, Director Apple, anything to share regarding Carleton?
Uh, well, just briefly, the Senior Recognition Awards happened last weekend. Um, we had Matt Kilerzuski of Carleton in the SMA R T T, and I wish I could tell you what that means. Um, I can't remember names, but, uh, Jeremy Harshman in culinary arts. Um, we're both awarded, um, Challenge Program Awards, which, you know, that's, um, represents our school well. Uh, and then also from the lower classmen, we have, um, Julian Brooks from culinary arts. Um, she's a junior. And I want to make sure I didn't miss anybody here. Well, anyway, yeah, so our kids are doing really well out there and, um, they're wrapping up the year. That's about all.
Great, thank you. Director Honschar is not here. Dr. Imperio, I believe the last thing they had was their roof replacement, but you know if that went?
That did, uh, that did move forward and it moved forward in a better anticipated share of the district's price of the roof than was initially reported to us. So that, that was, uh, we were pleased with that news.
And on SHAS, the Director Frank is not here. Do you have anything you would add for Director Frank?
I did. He, he sent me, uh, the last SHAS to meeting was the honors ceremony, which was on Saturday, April the 27th, and I did attend that with Mr. Frank, as, as did Mr. Lawfren. Students from the districts in the South Fields area, and this is a report from Mr. Frank, were recognized for very significant improvements either in their academic performance, um, getting their current level of, uh, improving their current, uh, level of success. It's an event to reward students that demonstrates particularly commendable improvement and growth. Carleton has two students recognized, Brianna Seifert and Matthew Hilar Zarsky. Uh, Brianna will be going on to study, uh, to be a dietitian and Matthew will study sports medicine or, uh, be an athletic trainer. So it was a wonderful event. We met both families, had pictures taken with them, and, uh, did get an opportunity to interact with, uh, families whose children were being recognized by the South Fields Area School District Association, that's what SHAS stands for, um, throughout the region. So it was quite an honor and the students, uh, richly deserved that honor who were recognized from our district.
Great, thank you. Uh, Director Simsick, anything for PSBA or legislative?
Um, I, I was talking, uh, the, the, recently the education committee passed, um, a package of four bills that are going to be considered in the House in reference to charter schools. So I think we should try and kind of keep up on what's going on with charter schools. It's House Bill 355, House Bill 356, 357, and 358. Two of these are supported by PSBA. And they would be House Bill 356. That's adding requirements to ensure charter school facilities are non-sectarian. Um, they give charter schools and entities the right of first refusal to purchase or leave school buildings no longer being used by traditional public school district. Also allows charter schools to operate at more than one location. Um, so they're, they're opposing this because it's more charter schools within the district. So that's why PSBA is against that one. The other one is, um, House Bill 357, the PSBA opposes, makes significant changes to the process used to apply to open a charter school. Um, amend an existing written charter of the admission enrollment of school, students in a charter school. So, uh, PSBA is asking that if, you know, that we give support to their opposition and call our legislators and say that we're against those couple of bills. So...
Thank you. Yes.
Welcome.
Sure. Please.
Uh, just to add what Mrs. Simsick's report, uh, the district is in the process and does have approved a, um, an establishment of a cyber school through the Carleton School District as partnered with the Santa Valley School District. And so we are excited about that and excited to make that opportunity, uh, available to students and their parents who wish to attend the cyber school. And I believe we do have our first student who has enrolled in that program. So that's exciting news for us to expand our educational programs, absolutely.
And to follow up on that, I think we talked last time, this is still very new.
Yes.
But our, our intent is to put together a program where we're actively communicating with parents and students and explaining the offering and the hope of attracting a lot of kids.
And, and thank you for that addition, and that's a needed report. We are, um, as soon as we get the school year, uh, beginning of the first week of June, we will be putting it together, a package with Dr. Adler, Mr. Mantich, to put together on our website, explaining all the details and how a student who is interested in a cyber school option through our district can, uh, can, uh, actually, uh, go through the Carleton School District for cyber school.
Great. It was, it was a lot of, yeah. And I assume, will we start just with the kids who have already elected to go to a charter or cyber? Or are we going to go to everybody?
Our, our plan, if we, uh, if we can, our plan is actually to go back and even contact existing students. And if for some reason they or their families feel the need to switch, that we would make the Carleton program through Santa Valley available to them.
How, when we, when we talk to these students, what are we telling them is the reason why they should not be going to the program they had been going to, instead going to ours? What's the reason? Why should they do that?
Well, David, we're still putting all of that together, so I do, I do want to say that, but it's not so much as to why they shouldn't be going somewhere else. What is it we have to offer? And, and one of the things that we feel that, or believe that we have to offer is giving them Carleton, uh, diploma and overseeing the program with Santa Valley, which is a very established cyber school program for many years and in many states. So, and it's even local. So we, we feel that's right up front, but we're going to kind of develop those advantages. Thank you for that question.
Any other reports or topics? If not, we'll move on. Uh, under section one miscellaneous, I'll entertain a motion to approve the additions to the 2018-2019 conference and field trip requests. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Move by the second?
Second.
Move the second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Under section two finance, we have fourteen items. Let's take them in chunks. How about, uh, I'll entertain a motion for items one through four. Um, number one, the April 2019 bills in the amount of 646,000.
Can, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Could we do the budget motion on its own?
Sure, sure. Let's do items one...
One through four with the exception of third?
Sure.
Okay.
Let's do one, two, and four. So I'll entertain a motion to do items one, two, and four. Number one, the April 2019 bill in the amount of 646,165 dollars and fifty-seven cents. Number two, the treasures report for the month ending March 31st, 2019. Number four, the budget transfers for the 2018-2019 school year as presented through April 2019. Do I have a motion for those three items, numbers one, two, and four?
So moved.
Move by the second?
Second.
Move the second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Now, item number three, which is the budget vote, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2019-2020 proposed final budget in the amount of 29,586,670 dollars with a millage rate of 24.1815. Proposed final budget will be advertised for a period of thirty days prior to the adoption of the final budget. Do I have a motion for that, item number three?
So moved.
Move by the second?
Second.
Move the second. Any discussion?
I just would like to, again, applaud Chris and Dr. Imperio for the effort. We do have a $711,000 deficit. That's not sustainable. We all understand that. We've already begun, we've got a looking into things that we can do to get our budget balanced, but I think from everything I've seen, uh, I think we should be positive in how we're approaching this because I think the administration, the superintendent of this management, have done a very good job dealing with very challenging budget issues. So I want to thank both of you guys and the rest of the administration for everything you've done.
Thank you, David.
Any other questions, comments?
Will be posted on the district website as well, the budget.
If there's nothing else, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve numbers, let's just, let's just bang out, numbers five through fourteen. Uh, number five, the 2019-2020 services agreement between the district and the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. Number six, the renewal agreement with Hosak Spec Mutsel and Wood LLP for auditing services for the years 2019, 2020, and 2021 at a rate of $15,300, $15,750, and $16,225 respectively. Number seven, the software service agreement between the district and Tyler Technologies for transportation software and professional services at an initial cost of $6,350, followed by an annual cost of $2,500 for the subsequent two years. Number eight, the food service management company contract between the district and Airmark Educational Services LLC for the 2019-2020 school year. Number nine, the purchase of a ten-passenger 2019 Ford Transit 150 XL van from Walton-Winn Ford through the Pennsylvania Department of General Services Co-Stars program that costs not to exceed $32,000. The van will be used for the transit of small student groups to extracurricular activities and events. Number 10, ratify the memorandum of understanding between the district and Division to Learn for the 2019-2020 school year. Number 11, the April 2019 athletic fund report with an ending balance of $7,318.29. Number 12, the April 2019 activities fund report with an ending balance of $90,643.32. Number 13, participation in the Church Mutual Region Program at a cost of $61,804, effective July 1, 2019. And number 14, the insurance package for the assigned general fund balance for the 2019-2020 school year as recommended by Arthur J. Gallagher Agency at a cost of $60,617. This insurance package includes cyber liability. Do I have a motion for those items, number five through 14?
So moved.
Second.
Move the second. Thank you. Any discussion?
On number eight, food service?
We have a multi-year contract, don't we? And then every, but every year we...
We, we re-sign it after the year.
We re-sign it.
You don't have to bid it. You only have to bid every five years.
Right, right. So my question is, when, when did we last bid it? When would we be next? Which, which year in the...
Two and five years ago, but I would have to try to go dig through our...
Are we close to having to bid it again?
We just bid it this year.
Okay, okay. So this is the first year or...
Yeah, so we do the first of five.
So, but Chris, just to be clear on Mr. Russo's question, you had other firms in...
Yes.
Submitted bids, you reviewed them, and, uh, the, um, most appropriate came from Airmark, we continue with them.
Yes, because you have to, you have to solicit so many, and let's say five, you would have to solicit. Uh, the league got back to us where they came in and four of our facilities, I believe that was Nutrition Mets and Airmark, obviously. Airmark and Mets put in a bid and with our history with Airmark and the comparables and reaching out to other districts, felt most comfortable with Airmark through the scoring process and such. So that's just kind of a short breakdown of the process right away.
Any other questions?
So, um, along those lines about bidding, the ten-passenger transit van, um, the General Services Co-Stars program, just so folks might understand, because it's in the Co-Stars program, that means that it's a, basically pre-negotiated statewide, so we don't have to, we don't have to solicit.
Right, and, and on top of that, with, with the van fair, we even called some other, some other dealerships, wanting to keep those type of payments on the law and such. So your hands are tied on so many places. You can go, well, we checked out, we looked at another district's van to see what we're getting because they didn't have it on the law. So we did some outside research on top of that, called, called dealerships that weren't Co-Stars within Co-Stars, and we felt the price was pretty fair. And even within Co-Stars, which they had listed dealerships, they didn't have vans available, so, you know, we, we were looking to, we're looking to purchase a lot of them.
So, so the idea though is that this is going to save us money for...
Yes.
Not having to get a bus for smaller groups. That's probably not going to take care of everything, but those sorts of trips that you might have, well, I think for your girls tennis team, you might have, um...
Well, I think didn't that, but they gave us a figure of almost $20,000. Just in athletics.
That was just in athletics. That doesn't have, we have to transport a child that makes the district van, so if there's two kids going, we would have to rent some type of bus or something. Now that they would have the opportunity to drive that out there, we are, and, you know, we're going to have motor vehicle records ran on each household's ride. I think we're also, um, we're also going to have a training on how to drive the van for those people, so you would have to go through that process too, I think.
Yeah. Which we'll be reviewing.
Yes.
Well, that's great. It sounds like, um, really the van, the, the van will pay for itself within a couple of years.
It's not the first year.
Yeah.
We gave very concerned last November first.
Right, well, you, but, um, great, thank you.
So Chris, with all of that, the cost of, the cost of additional gas, do you still expect a payback of maybe eighteen months perhaps?
I think a day, two months would be fair. Like I said, could do that in the first year. No, we, we did some general maintenance, put a number in, so I have a feeling two months is very reasonable.
Okay. And the software under number seven is, we had previously paid a person to help route the buses and handle the bus?
We had a position in-house to do the bus routing. Last year that position was, um, furloughed at that point, so, uh, we've kind of done it with the help of SDA and, um, Kim Holcroft, who's my assistant, took some of that, took that over also. So with that and SDA, which Kim's done an excellent job, we needed some way to bring it in-house, and I think this would, this would enable us because we got some pushback from SDA as far as the help with routing. So we need to bring more in-house. And with our experience, not being much in the logistics and routing aspect, this program, we, we did a run-through on the program, a webinar, and, you know, it really could give us the ability to pull back some of our transportation costs with, to see how efficiently we're running everything. So hopefully this is another thing that can pay for itself within a year by law because we get the number of one bus share, forty-two thousand dollars, if we're in here for a bus.
Any other questions? None? Um, to clarify, since you weren't here for all of this, Chris, you want to not vote or abstain from the vote? We're about to vote on it.
Could you just go over everything?
The whole thing again?
Like thirty minutes worth?
From the beginning?
Dennis has a table.
Dennis, just be honest with me.
They did get the, um...
And, uh, so it feels unfair. It was the recent vote?
If Dr. Mendoza feels that she needs to abstain, that would be up to her. If she has reviewed items five through 14 and feels comfortable, remember we had a work session on these things. She would be, um, certainly within her rights to vote as an individual, determination, lot one for the chair.
Thank you. So as, as our solicitor pointed out, it's up to you, but...
I think I'm comfortable. I have...
Okay. Very good, very good. Uh, then if there's no other questions, uh, we'll vote on items five through 14. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? All right, motion carries. Under section three personnel, I'll entertain a motion to approve items one through six. Number one, Pamela Stone, to provide six half-hour summer tutoring sessions for a secondary student between June 10th and July 31st, 2019, and the per diem rate. Number two, a letter of intent to retire submitted by elementary aide Kimberly McHale, effective the last day of the 2018-19-20 school year. Number three, reassign Emory Hughes to the position of cafeteria worker at the junior senior high school, effective August 16th, 2019. Number four, award the positions of temporary summer custodian helpers at an hourly rate of $10 to the following: Andrew Clark, Amanda Griffin, Mike Griffin, Kathleen Griffin, Ricky Laird, Michaela Richards, Michaela Ripmeyer, Justin Stangle, Nicole Stangle, Donna Thompson. Number five, the addition to the 2019-20-20 supplemental athletic list as presented. Number six, award the positions of summer maintenance helpers to David Karshner and Gary Mikowski under the terms of the custodial maintenance collective bargaining unit agreement. Do I have a motion for those six items?
So moved.
Move by the second?
Second.
Move the second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Under section five policy, I'll entertain the following two items, motions for the following two items. Number one, adopt and approve the second and final reading of policies number 810 dot two through 819, per the full PSBA policy review. And number two, the first reading of policy 810 dot three with an attachment as presented for the full PSBA policy review. Do I have a motion for those two items?
So moved.
Move by the second?
Second.
Move the second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? This motion carries. Under old business, any director of the old business they'd like to bring up?
Uh, we're in a search. Where do we, where are we looking with that?
Good question. So, um, I think we've had, uh, good dialogue in the past and we've talked about this for six months, on and off, um, and we've had several audience members express interest as well. Um, and if, if I, if I'm inaccurately representing anything, I'd love the board to step in and add their, add their, their position as well. But I believe because of the number of, um, of critical issues that we're facing right now with finances, with the contract negotiation coming up, um, the state of education evolving at, at the pace that it is, we have, the board has asked Dr. Imperio if he would stay on with us a second year, um, to help us both do, um, all of these items and also to help us find the next superintendent.[1789.83] superintendent. So, the process is, this summer, we're going to conduct a, a series of community engagement interviews, we're looking to interview stakeholders. What is going well, what is not going well? What things do you love about the district? What things do you see areas for improvement? What budget areas do you have suggestions about, et cetera, et cetera? So sometime this summer, we will have a more formal process that we'll put on our website, we'll communicate to the public, and then we will conduct, we will define a profile for our next superintendent sometime this fall, and I don't know that we finalized the schedule, either sometime late this fall, or probably sometime very early in 2020, that we'll be going out to the marketplace to look for a new superintendent.
It affects, would be no less than the end of the next school year to have someone.
Ideally, maybe June 1st, potentially.
Well, I mean, right, because the typically make an whole, of the district, we're going to be hiring, from should be hires from the school district.
Correct.
Typically 30 days, or 60 days, but we had in our contract, we.
We had nine.
Nine hours, so.
Excellent district, gentlemen. Excellent question, thank you. Any audience members have it? Is that, I know you've asked a couple of times, so there's.
Yeah, I'm disappointed here, really.
Just good to hear this is.
I said disappointed.
Oh, really?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. It's a critical time, no, no offense.
No, no.
It's not a time to, I think, we really need to set a mission, set an agenda, manage to some expectations and key priorities.
I appreciate your, your candor. Part of the, part of the reason was the need and the desire to get community feedback on where we want to head as a district, what things are valuable to the community members, and given all of the other things that are going on, given the budget concerns that we have spent a group, our group has spent a lot of time working on, we did not want to shortchange that public component and getting staff and, and community members' feedback on these topics and making sure that we're taking that part, so.
I think should be pointed out, too, given the district, the size that we are, historically, effectively, look at the last hires we've had, have always been individuals who have not had prior superintendent experience. So I feel we're in a pretty lucky position to have an individual with the experience that Dr. Imperio has, given where we are with our budget, given with our contacts and negotiations, to bring somebody new and who's never been a superintendent before, raising so many things. I, I was concerned with that situation, so I, I think, I'm certainly very comfortable with the approach that's been taken, where we're going, and I, I think it's going to work out well for the district. I'm very happy with this. Thank you for, for your insight. I agree.
I think also, like, your experience specifically with Conalton, who taught controversial issues before, whether it was the SOS, but also Rosen Farm, Section Men, all these other issues. So, I mean, I think that helped, it's not just stability, but it's specifically the ins and outs of our community specifically, and he's been at negotiating tables. And so because it's so critical, that, that I think that is a decision.
Any other, thank you, any other old business topics for anybody? How about new business? I think we have a few new business items. Dr. Imperio, do you want to comment on board docs? You mentioned board docs.
Yeah, for those of you who are not familiar with the board docs, instead of producing all of the luminous amount of paper that we do for the board for each board meeting, we can transfer that into an electronic document that the board can have access through their own computers, and it can be more timely, much more efficient, and much more cost-saving. So the board would like to take a look at board docs. I've worked in other districts that use board docs, and as I said, it's a software program that eliminates a lot of the paperwork and puts it into a software program. Michelle has been working with Board Docs company to bring someone in to do a demonstration to the board, and last I heard, June or July, are we going to get something going into this?
He was willing to come in for the June 11th meeting for finance, that's the finance committee meeting, so we didn't know if we could push it back, because that's an important finance meeting. Push it back to July is the other option. We could do it at 7:30 on the 11th, the finance committee would then be from 6 to 7:30, or 6 to 7:15.
It's not particularly a finance committee meeting, but if, if the board is anxious about it, we can do it in June, or if we're going to do it in July. I thought July, but if you're.
You're in favor of July?
Yes.
July or July.
Okay, we'll, we'll set it up for July, because we, we know everything should pretty much be in place then, and the board will be able to vote sometime.
If I could comment on that, we've looked at board docs in the past, three, four, or five years ago, and at the time, I think it was about $10,000, and we thought we could save a few thousand dollars of paper, but whether or not it was the right decision, I don't remember, but we're going to take another look at it, and there are efficiencies to be had clearly, so that's.
Well, and also, as we've discussed, the, maybe the real advantage is the fact that everything's right there, it's so easy to search.
Searchable, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we could go, we could be in the midst of the meeting and say, what were we talking about three years ago? Was that a tax info, bone areas? That's, that's great.
Sure, absolutely. Any other new business items?
Well, on the community meetings, I, I think Mr. Anantjar was, had an interest in that. We're trying to do what I call a more thorough job of getting current data on the website, particularly that affects our, our constituents, such as the budget, such as our approach to the budget, such as also personnel moves and how they affect district programs, and if you go onto the district's homepage, you will see, you will see a copy of Mr. Jeswick's budget presentation from last week, and also, we did put a statement on about the elementary music program, since there is, seems to be some confusion out there among some of the constituents, that the music program in the elementary will remain intact, and there will be choral music, and there will be instrumental music and band and general music and everything that we've had before. In fact, in many ways, I think we, we believe that we'll improve it.
So the, thank you. So the community meetings piece was a feedback mechanism, and I think George and Christine and some other board members had, had noted the positive feedback that we got from the community on having some sort of semi-regular roundtable conversation, whether it's the superintendent or the board, or a member of the board and superintendent, but what are your thoughts about having some sort of semi-regular quarterly meetings or biennial meetings with an advisory committee of some kind?
You know, I don't think it hurts to put that out there, and to see if the public is interested in attending or what their feedback is. Of course, another forum, certainly are, are board meetings where they have an opportunity to speak of when you establish some meetings, quarterly meetings, we could go ahead and do that and see how it works.
I think there was definitely interest expressed in reinstituting the parental advisory, parent advisory committees.
Right.
And those were.
So Mr. Myrdle was on that advisory committee, that parent advisory, so then.
Do tell.
You have questions about how it worked and how helpful, because I, I always heard it was very helpful.
Yes.
Your member with Dr. Piper, he got lots of ideas and understanding, that helped, what he helped us understand.
It was a way to speak to someone from the school in more of a less formal environment, to ask questions that may not, you may not want to bring here, and to get feedback for things, and find out what was going on, and to kind of, I think, Dr. Piper found out some rumors that were circulating that way, and we found out actual facts instead of rumors. So I think as a whole, it was a very good experience. At the beginning, when it first started, the, the ask was that it be not a place to complain about individuals, and I think for the most part, that was honored. People are human.
How many parents participated?
It ranged. Sometimes there were three of us, sometimes there were eight or nine, it depended.
How often did you meet?
About, I think it was about four times a year.
Kind of like matching the corners of the.
Yes, yeah.
And I've seen it in other districts, and I've seen it be successful. Sometimes it also can include the PTA presidents of the, as a way for them to have their ear to what that particular school or program, we can include them.
And I think some of the, also, the reason it started to begin was, was when the kids got to the high school, or the junior senior high school, there wasn't a PTA anymore. There wasn't as much interaction with teachers, which obviously there was if your child had a problem, but if your child didn't have a problem, you maybe talked to their teacher once a year. So it was a way to find out what was going on in the district, and, and a way to point out, being like, okay, this is happening, and we're not sure how this goes, and he'd be like, let me look into that. And it, I think, as a whole, it was a good idea.
And I don't think that we ever actually made a decision to stop doing that. I think it just, done it to avoid.
Aaron and I were scheduled the August meeting.
Yeah, he didn't schedule the August meeting, and then he left.
Right.
So he knew what was coming, and he.
But I do like your caveat, it can't, I mean, obviously, it can be complaints, but
you're running to major issues, it's not a forum to talk about specific individuals, and so, they have to be directed towards general comments, programs, moving, and I think just as a, a positive approach, what's going well, and what can we do to make it better, and what are some of the needs that you, as the constituents, as parents, as residents, see that we need to be thinking about in the district.
So I think it would be helpful. So perhaps we can start, we have to look at what kind of dates, what kind of timeframe would be, would be good for you, and sometime before the start of school, I assume we'll have one meeting, is that a?
I think, I think that's, yeah, within those, there's, I'll put out a time plan, we'll have it posted.
Thanks.
It'd be nice to invite people, the families that previously participated, and then, you know, starting, like he says, the PTA presidents, think of other key people, but like the ones who already were doing it too. I don't know, it might.
Were these meetings open to anybody? Was there a set group that was invited?
There was, it varied. It was kind of a set group to begin with, and then as people graduated, it was like if you, and there were a couple of times, it was as if you know anybody who would not want to participate, so I think it was growing again at the end.
If someone showed up, would they be invited?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so it was open to the public?
Oh, yeah, it was.
But you tended to have a core group of folks who tended to go.
Yes.
But they were open to the public.
Absolutely.
That's, yeah. Yeah.
No, I don't think it was really announced anywhere, but I don't think it was for it to be announced.
Well, I have to get it set up. Excellent. Last question for the audience, is there a day of the week in general that works better, or evenings, or not weekends, I assume?
Board meetings.
Pardon?
Board meetings.
Oh, why, so, so we can knock it?
Just, does it matter? You guys can work that out separately?
I encourage Google Hangouts.
All right. Google Hangouts is his favorite. Okay. So it's not in the same room?
No, you can have it in the same room anytime, it may be available.
Gotcha, okay. Any other topics? Any other new business?
The legislative platform, we did give you the PSBA legislative platform of the board is interested in endorsing anything in, any of the, the items that we sent you, and, Michelle, when was that due?
Deadline June 20th.
Okay, so if you want to take a look at that, again, they have a number, we sent it to you, we can resend it to you if you, you need it, to see if our board wants to go on what I would say, record through an agenda item saying, yes, we endorse this particular item that it made.
I think what, what they're asking is, you know, do we agree with what the platform was from 2018-19? Do we want to see that carried forward? Is there something new that we think should be added?
Right.
I sent, I sent an email out that had an article from PSB, and it was attached, and it was all about special ed, and I didn't see anything in the 2018-19 platform that addressed special ed and the cost of it, the mandate, how little resources are available, you know, how, how difficult it is for a school district to try to, you know, meet the needs that are presented to us. So I really felt like that should be part of the PSBA platform, and if you have the time, I would encourage you to read that article that I sent out to everybody, and consider that as something that we would suggest adding.
So we would put on the platform that they presented, and we would add the continued focus on the cost or the issues associated with children with special needs.
Okay, and we could, we could attach the fair funding formula topic to that, because they are, they're linked.
So we'll have that on the next agenda. I think we're good.
Any other new business? Open forum, any other open, any open forum items from the audience?
Go ahead, I got a lot.
You got a lot, go ahead. So the, you talked about the electronic documents for the board, would that make it easier to make some documents public? Because, so you guys vote on things that say as presented. You guys know what was presented. We, and I know it's not always possible that some things have, are confidential that you've gone on, but the things that are.
I, I sat in on a webinar on board docs, so I guess that's kind of how it come out again, and then what I understood from the webinar, and why I wanted us to look at it more, is it's a more proactive approach, it's searchable information, and there is a component to it that would be available to.
So it would help, it would help with the.
Yeah, so if you're questioning, well, what was that policy? You know, you type in keyword, and it can bring all the policies that have that keyword, so you can, you know, it's, it's easier to try to find information.
Yeah.
It links to legislation, it links, it links to a lot of different things, but there were a couple of different levels available, you know, one for smaller districts, one for larger districts, so I don't, you know, I'd like more information, that's partly why we wanted to have.
Like, for example, you guys voted on two policy issues, and one was the first reading, and one was the second reading. Where would you go to find out what that was about?
Well, the policy is on the website.
It's on the website, yeah.
Visions to the policy would not get me up, right?
Right. When, when the policy is a draft, only I can see it or the board can see it, that's just the way it is being operated, and which is actually.
Oh, so this is on the PSBA website, not carving.
No, probably talking to the articles.
But it links, it links to policy from.
I don't know, one of you later had some of that.
Once it's, once it's passed, it goes on.
Yeah, when it's approved, it's put on the website, but the board has to do a first
reading.
A board doc.
To go over it and make sure that it's proper, you know, everything's worded the way they want it, and then the second reading finalizes it.
Yeah.
So, but the district is going through a full policy review, we started at the zeros, we're at the 800s now. They go up to 900.
Okay.
So we're like almost finished, and we'll probably be starting all over again, because it's taken about two and a half years.
Well, it's a lot, I think, is like PSB recommendations and things, like things that change throughout the courses.
Speaker under school board, you know, policy manuals, and so it says like our agenda or minutes, and then policy manuals there. And it's just by section by section, we go through and revise it, so you know, like cell phones, like 16 years ago, one.
Yeah, I think the policy, you know, you want to.
Block the disc. Yeah, security, so we want to match, you know.
Okay, thank you.
And, and you know, I may not have to drag it on and on, the first reading, since the board approved a van, we want a policy on use of the van, training to use the van, all the various parts that need to perfect the new district when we get in this vehicle.
And I, so I do have a question on that, so with the purchase of the new vehicle, something to consider writing either into your policy or into your practice is, there are going to be times when two people want the van at the same time. So if you, if you come into that situation, will the, having already had a van and people able to drive it, open up the, the potential of renting another van for the teacher to drive, instead of renting a full-size bus for that other group, and therefore continuing to save your costs?
Well, you know, we consider that kind of like a good problem, because.
No, no, it is, but it's.
It's being used to the force. being used to the fullest. On the van, we are kind of looking at one either first come, first served, or where's the van going? And who would prioritize? Yeah. The district, if we prioritize. But right now, it wouldn't be getting another van, would be doing this using a...
No, not purchasing another one, but maybe renting one. Instead of renting a bus and a driver, rent another van if you come into that.
We do rent, we do rent.
That's what, okay.
Yeah, we've been writing something for like the track, for the track stakes, for the kids that made the stakes, for renting multiple vehicles for that, puts on a bus because that's a more reasonable...
And while the van did, we have facilities, we only have one auditorium, we only have whatever. So there are times where there are conflicts. And we manage that, so we're going to have the policy that...
I'm not just making suggestions, that's all.
We know it. Yeah, that's a good point. And we have been saving by using a van instead of a big old school bus, so we just do that again.
Yeah. Any other questions? You know, you had several, but...
I'm good.
I, Thomas and Williamson, is there any direction that's taken with Kraken going after them more or any, any more feedback than what was discussed two months ago? This was the, this is the outfit that owns the HVAC issues at Kraken.
Let's, at a high level, so the air conditioning units, Dan, do you remember if we got those addressed or are we still...
Well, Thomas and Williamson was just the project manager.
Right.
They don't know anything on it. It would be...
The manufacturers.
The manufacturers of it. And they're in the process right now of working out somewhat of a plan for the repairs of that equipment.
Excellent. All right. And my specific, my first of all comment, Board Docs is, I use it almost daily. It's a fantastic tool for transparency. All of the things like the Tyler contract, you can put in the bids from the others, you can put in your scoring rubric, you can put in all of those things that you can see how it was contested, why it was awarded, the earmark contracts, all those sorts of things. So you don't, you don't have a reference to some obscure finance item that we have no way to find us in public, right? It's a terrific tool, adopted tomorrow as far as I'm concerned. I think it's terrific.
Can I ask a question on that topic? Are there good integrators in Pittsburgh that do training or where is a good place to get training on Board Docs for our staff that has not used it?
I would, I would assume that the IU can do it. I know Harvest on the north side probably can as well. There's probably several. I don't know Pittsburgh that well, but I can certainly make two phone calls and give you great references.
What if the Board Docs can sell it to the...
Yeah.
It'd be great.
Yeah. Yeah, the, and that's, that's the other piece to it, the parent advisory committee is phenomenal and needs to get done or will do it. The other side is a technology advocacy committee. We just desperately need it in this district. There's, we're far behind.
So we have a new, maybe you can comment on that.
Just, that's an interesting comment because just today, our new tech director began his first day at Memorial with the district. His name is Josh Jones. We hired him two months ago, but his former district would not release him, which we consider a good thing because when they're doing it, you can let somebody go, that may not be a good sign. So they really kept him until the last day, did as much work out of him. I do know Josh, I think he's going to be a wonderful fit for the district and do a lot of the things that you're talking about.
Yeah, I think that's a, it's long overdue.
So you're advocating for a technology advisory committee, just like a parent advisory committee?
Absolutely. Many, many districts do it and it's...
So maybe we can give Josh a couple of weeks or a month or two to get settled or however long you think's appropriate, but maybe we can look to have an initial community technology meeting just to share ideas and get a level set and see where we are.
Might help me understand, specifically a technology parent advisory committee. How is that, what's...
So a large district that I worked with in Florida had many tens of thousands of students in it. They actually established a parent advocacy committee around technology on major purchases. So when you're looking at things like we underutilize our student information system. We don't do online student registration. We just review transportation software. These are things that if you involve the parents in these sorts of decisions, you get tremendous feedback from the community. You get greater buying from stakeholders in general when you're doing these things.
So you're trying to tap into parents who have some kind of expertise in technology?
Not just expertise, it's also just part of a general marketing strategy, right? What is, and I think you saw it at the board meeting with the music program, there's a lot of misinformation. I think the word rumor was well-used. There's a lot of misunderstanding that happens out there. The more parents you have, the more constituents in general that you have, doesn't need to be parents, that are involved in these sorts of things, the better picture that you have holistically within the community of the challenges and the opportunities to solve them that are presented to the district.
Isn't that what the parent advisory committee is doing?
It can be a subset of that, absolutely.
That's what I was thinking.
I recall I attended a technology advisory committee six, seven, whatever years ago and we talked about at the time, personal cell phone usage at school. We had some parents there that were advocating against allowing personal cell phones. We had some other parents were advocating for it. There was conversations about what could kids afford and it was in, in that one instance, it was an interesting conversation around technology use in school. We got different feedback from different types of families and different individuals. So that, just that one's...
So it's a fuller picture. It's not just the technology people, it's the end users, it's the...
Correct, yeah. And even like the digitization of stuff. So we, we don't do online, we don't, some other organizations have moved from more analog to more digital.
I don't think it's that we're opposed to it. I think it's a good idea, but I guess just organizing it, you know, it's like we could have 50 million committees as a board. And we pulled out PINEs specifically because it was such a huge issue, not in-depth enough. But I think with that, that fits greatly under the umbrella of parents because it's going to be a parent group and it's like you spearhead that, represent that subcommittee and that you would be able to discuss, give updates and stuff in the parent that has either board members and the superintendent or just the superintendent. So I think it is a vital thing and we're trying to keep our district moving up. Had a bunch of sixth graders approach me and talk to me about why don't we have online grades that they could monitor? They were very upset by their nine-week...
See, but that's not, that's not a technology issue. That's an issue about...
Oh, that's not a technology issue?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, right.
With the individuals who need to do the work to get things.
Right, but that's what touches into that. But it's still like sharing needs that even students were specifically asking for that. It's not just parents, you know, being anxious and saying, did my student turn it in? There was actually sixth graders at Kraken that were trying to manage, they're all involved in a bunch of stuff, but they were trying to manage their assignments. And some of them finding by grade time, they didn't get assignments back, so they had no idea going into grades, what they were going to get. And then they were disappointed when they're like, this one thing that turned out to be a big grade, everyone got nailed on. And so they were upset, like we didn't know that going in. So it was just like, here are students who are actually trying to use techno, they're in the technology age and we're behind. So I appreciate that.
So maybe as a starting point, since we've had a hiatus, maybe it's, we get together and we have a meeting with the community, parents and community members, and maybe technology is a one focus area, but we've got multiple focus areas until we get the landscape of what, what topics are hot and what are important. And if we need to break off technology or separate meeting, we do it, but it's not, at least there's a focus area.
Absolutely. And I think, you know, we're, no surprise, we're not a huge district, so our, our ability to invest in technology is limited. So we need to be very strategic in whatever is what we're going to want to. I think a lot of the decisions we make about technology are going to be based on technology issues. You know, what is it that we need? How can technology help us to get there? Therefore, the parent advisory committee, I think is a great place. You mentioned that as a subset of it is a great idea.
To your, to both your points about parents versus community members, maybe we should not call it a parent advisory committee because we want parents clearly, but it's, we want a community advisory.
Community is very broad.
The next question I have is on the budget. I know we were applying Title I status schoolwide down in the elementaries. Is that going to transitively apply to the junior, senior high school, assuming we get approval? Will we...
Nothing in the junior, senior high school?
No, this is only, so the, to turn it from a target to a schoolwide doesn't mean that you get an increased amount of funding for the schools. So it's still with the same amount of funding, but you're able to distribute and disperse your, your Title I resources through the elementaries at this point. And I'm going to speak with our coordinator, Ms. Riley, who has a fantastic job, that's going to stay right now at the elementary level.
And hasn't there been a consistent reduction?
Yes.
In Title I, specifically over the last two years?
Two years ago, we were at 687 and this year we're down to, what was it, about $60,000, $558,000. Five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, so six, it's been going down dramatically to that 10% rate. So it's...
That's a challenge that we're facing. So I think over the two years, it's over, well over, well, I don't want to say well over like 100 and I'm going to say 10,000.
Oh, 120, 147.
Yeah.
So from 687, 618 to 5, 558. So I mean, it's on.
Dr. Amler, is that something that's, the Title I reduction, is that something that's just us or is that a national, statewide?
That's statewide and it's based on our census report from the American Human Consumer Survey, based on two years' previous data. So that data, and that gets released in January and there's not a guarantee that our debt, our funding goes up or goes down based on it, but that's typically part of the formula. And so with the funding from the federal level coming out from the state and the state having to reallocate some of their own funding into federal level for new designations based on the S O guidelines. So it's also causing a reduction to school districts.
I was, and I expect about a 55% decrease over the past couple of years each year.
As expectations go up and requirements go up and the funding goes down.
So if you get another 10%, it's another 55% next year, which ours is pretty, pretty consistently at that rate. But I think the counter to that is being shovel rate. There will come a time where education may become a priority again from a, from a federal standpoint. They channel those dollars just like we saw through stimulus. They put them through existing programs, they don't put out new grants for these. So Title IV, Title I, these are places we want to make sure, it might be just a framework or a skeleton of an operation for now. But going schoolwide means we can't hire coaches in a targeted assistance program because coaches would assist the whole building, right? So being able to do things that are schoolwide, both at the elementaries and applying that up at the high schools as well, seems to be like a good move to put that framework in place if we can get it while we have the opportunity. So that the funding metrics ever change and more dollars get pumped into education, we're ready to actually handle it. And we also have to be prepared to continue to work it out also. Absolutely. Do what's best there.
More currents there. Getting worse, okay. But I appreciate your...
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's it. I think Title I would be, if we saw change, Title I would be where the funding is, is brought back and reinstated federally. So I think that it makes sense that we're continuing on this plan of getting schoolwide in the elementaries, but maybe thinking that through at the high school level as well because we haven't done.
So maybe as part of that community advisory committee, you can, and maybe Dr. Amler, you can, Dr. Amler could grab some of your ideas and put them with all of your other knowledge and experience.
We've tended to use it for classroom reduction.
That's Title II.
Oh, Title II, okay.
It's not classroom reduction. Title I right now is really driven through salaries of the, our Title I staff at the elementaries and that's salaries and benefits. And that's pretty much where that, where Title I funds currently.
And when it was higher, we had a little carryover on top of that, which our carryover is no longer.
Any other open forum feedback questions?
Last question is if you're moving towards a cyber program. There are a number of programs within the state. I know Burke's, self-servingly has a terrific Asian Studies program that they make available, not just to cyber students, but to all students. That would be a great way from a marketing standpoint to engage the community, students who are interested in, in, in doing these sorts of things. There's a number of different resources around the state and Burke's I use program is unbelievable. So it'd be a great one for us to adopt.
Maybe you could jog that down. Right now, a word, or like a better term, we'll call it baby steps and we can start. We did invest in examining several programs around the state. Rachel Amler went to different schools and for right now, where we're starting, we saw Seneca Valley as most appropriate for the district. And so that's, that's where we begin, but that's not the beginning and end.
Yeah, that's great. Seneca Valley is a great program. So good.
So you're talking more about adding...
General plus availability.
Okay. So if you want, even if you want to email that, that link or if there's any reference material with Dr. Imperial, if you're willing to see it happen. Any other open forum questions, comments? If not, weren't any open forum questions, comments? Nope. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Someone?
Second?
Second.
All of us, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, Nick? We are adjourned.